Meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 9, 2025. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News and Tap into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Let's rise for the pledge.
Right now, I'll call the roll. Mrs. Dalton?
Here.
Mrs. Granholm?
Here.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Malfetta?
Here.
Mr. Otto?
Here.
Mr. Tor?
Yeah.
Mr. Valentino?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
And Mrs. Um?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ms. Keller?
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the April 28, 2025 board meeting.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
I'll call the roll on the minutes. Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Ms. Granholm?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
And Mrs. Um?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Dr. Mingle, correspondence and information.
No report here, Mrs. Um.
Good evening, everyone. We have a full house. This is lovely, wonderful to see. This is because tonight we are having our annual awards and recognitions of staff and administration that has served our district wonderfully always, but this last year in particular. So I'm going to keep my remarks short. This year's school board election takes place on November 4, 2025. This year will be, there will be three, three-year terms appearing on the ballot. Those seats are currently held by Nikki Dalton, Scott Otto, and myself. Anyone who would like to appear on the ballot for the November election must file a nominating petition by no later than Monday, July 28. A candidate kit with all the relevant information is available at the New Jersey School Boards Association website and will also be added and available on the district website. I would like to extend a special welcome this evening. We have a student from Easton Area High School, Zachariah Hagel, who is here as he completes his AP Government Class. He is attending various municipal and local meetings as part of learning about our government. He will be graduating class of 2025 in mere days, I imagine. So welcome, Zachariah. We're very pleased when we have students come here to witness government at work. And with that, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mrs. Um. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see so many of our staff and your families. It's also great to see current and former staff who are back to support their colleagues. Always a fun night. Just a couple of quick announcements. We've had many celebratory days recently, and tonight's a good meeting to recognize those days as well. May 1 was School Principals' Day. All of our principals are here tonight as well. May 7 was School Nurses' Day. And all of last week, May 5 through 9 Teacher Appreciation Week. And I know everybody has been thanked and shown appreciation through a lot of different ways, but on behalf of the Board of Education and myself, thank you, everybody in the room for all that you do to make our schools great here in Warren Township. I also want to thank Jen Ronkiewicz. I don't know if Jen is in the room tonight. I don't think so. But when we take a recess after all of the speeches and everything else, there's a place behind this display where you can all go take pictures with the school district logo and all of that sort of thing. But all of the artwork you see throughout the room is the product of our Warren Middle School students under her leadership and guidance, and it's really amazing. And you should definitely take a look as you're, as you're walking through. And with that, I think we're probably going to jump right into our presentations.
Yes, please.
And I believe we're starting with Ms. Smith and ALT.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. We are changing it up a little bit so we're not speaking to all of your backs this year. So your next will thank us tomorrow. I'm honored to begin this, this honorable night by recognizing Mrs. Marissa Martin Sareo as ALT's recipient of the Governor's Educator of the Year. As a multi-talented educator, she has devoted approximately 15 years in total to fostering a love of learning in her students with a career history of teaching art in addition to language arts and social studies. Warren Township has witnessed her talents as an art teacher over the past six years, where she has served students in both Angelo El Tomaso Elementary School and Woodland Elementary School. Mrs. Sareo regularly refers to her students as artists, creating an environment that nurtures creativity and self-expression. Her ability to differentiate instruction for learners from kindergarten through fifth grade showcases her deep understanding of childhood development and her commitment to maximizing each student's growth. Beyond teaching art, she integrates fine motor skills, literacy, and mathematics into her art lessons, ensuring a holistic approach to learning. Additionally, Mrs. Martin Sareo, her passion for education extends well beyond academics. She incorporates social, emotional learning, and cultural awareness into her lessons by exposing students to diverse artists and their works, fostering an appreciation for art's role in understanding the world. Her dedication to inspiring young learners is evident in her annual evening art shows, where students proudly showcase their creativity and accomplishments. She consistently partners with parents and the community to support PTO events and encourages student participation in various competitions. These events not only highlight her students' talents, but also reflect her exceptional ability to build confidence and a sense of pride in their work. Mrs. Sareo continues to serve as a model of educational leadership, overseeing professional learning communities, and offering professional development opportunities for staff. Her unwavering commitment to her students and her craft exemplifies what it means to be an outstanding educator, making her truly deserving of this prestigious honor. Congratulations, Mrs. Sareo. And now, Ali Tuja from Central School.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Before I start talking about our Teacher of the Year, I do have to call out one thing that I do on top of this is I serve as a mentor in the Leaders to Leaders program. And it's a two-year program for anyone who is a new administrator in New Jersey, and at the end of the two years, they have to present their culminating project. And one of my mentees just presented her project tonight, Rebecca Chickless, who also happens to be married to one of our award recipients. A round of applause for her because that was two years of work. All right. Good evening. It's a joy to stand here and celebrate someone who truly represents the heart and soul of education and of Central School, Ms. Michelle Wolken. Since joining the district in 2017, Michelle has brought warmth, dedication, and a level of commitment that goes above and beyond expectations. Michelle has worn many hats over the years, and they've all fit her well. She started her journey with us as a second-grade special education teacher, and right from the start, she built meaningful relationships with her students, with her team, and with our entire school community. When a colleague unexpectedly had to step away mid-year, Michelle didn't hesitate. She stepped into a general education classroom and made it feel seamless. Over the years, Michelle has taught across multiple grades, both in special education and general education, and she's consistently raised the bar. Whether she's serving as a model co-teaching classroom or jumping into a brand-new curriculum, Michelle brings creativity, leadership, and enthusiasm to everything she does. This past year, Michelle took on the ASAT math position and grew into the role quickly. She has this incredible ability to meet kids right where they are and lift them up, making sure every child feels capable, confident, and cared for. She tailors her instruction like a true expert, and her results speak for themselves. Students love her because she sees them not just as learners, but as people. She celebrates their wins, walks beside them through tough moments, and creates a classroom where every student feels safe, valued, and excited to learn. Her impact extends far beyond the classroom. Michelle makes people feel welcome, supported, and inspired to grow. She's the kind of colleague others turn to for advice, encouragement, or just a moment of grounded wisdom. As a trusted colleague and a member of our SEL Committee, she's helped shape a school culture rooted in kindness, growth, and collaboration. Michelle is the teammate who always shows up, whether it's sharing resources or choreographing a dance for something. She's the teacher who never stops learning and never stops giving. Thank you for your dedication, passion, and the joy you bring to our school each and every day. Congratulations to Ms. Wolken, our 2025 Teacher of the Year.
I thought you were going to say, I don't think so. Dr. Cook, it's all you.
Good evening, Linnea. Hello. Parents are here. Surprised brother visit. That was wonderful. Awesome. Mount Horb Elementary School is very proud to announce that Ms. Linnea Middleton is this year's Governor's Educator of the Year Award recipient from Mount Horb. Ms. Middleton began her 15 years of teaching preschool in Commercial, Upper, and Winslow Townships. Mount Horb has been her home for the last seven years. Ms. Middleton knew at a very young age that teaching was her passion and where she wanted to focus all of her attention, and we are lucky for that. Ms. Middleton's preschool classroom is not only pristine, it is well organized, but more truly centered on her students' experience. Each and every moment is planned to ensure that all children are getting what they need in a manner that is accessible to them and when they need it. Ms. Middleton has built and maintains a fabulously structured, warm, loving, caring environment where students know precisely when and how to contribute and are afforded many opportunities to exercise their own independence. Ms. Middleton also regularly makes it a point to celebrate the many milestones and accomplishments that take place in her classroom. Her classroom is truly a magical place to learn, grow, and thrive. Outside of the classroom, Ms. Middleton makes invaluable contributions by way of the Special Education Committee, the Staff Advisory Committee, and is a union representative in our building. On top of that, she is a leader among her peers and very well respected by all with whom she works. She also devotes portions of her summer to aiding in the process of preschool scheduling. Thank you. The Mount Horb family is extremely proud of Ms. Middleton.
Good evening. It is my distinct honor to present Woodland's Teacher of the Year Award to an educator who consistently puts her students first, Mrs. Tiffany Seraphin.
Who really is Mrs. Clifford, but I don't want to get in trouble with payroll, so until it's officially changed. Ms. Seraphin is a fifth-grade teacher who has dedicated more than 15 years to Woodland and Warren Township School District. In each of her teaching assignments, Mrs. Seraphin has proven to be a genuine, passionate, and talented educator who really does put the needs of others before her own. Mrs. Seraphin's teaching philosophy revolves around the belief that human connection is more important than any lesson plan, any test, or any quiz. Her rapport with her students is top-notch, and each of them truly see her as a role model, an advocate, and a teacher that they can always count on. Recognizing the importance of social and emotional learning, Mrs. Seraphin has served on the Woodland SEL team, which has been instrumental in building belonging and self-worth in our building. She's also been a chair of the expressive reading showcase Eat Your Heart Out, Mr. Yenish, which allows students to build confidence and to shine in special ways. Mrs. Seraphin is a leader in the building and consistently helps promote positive morale and just a genuine love of learning. She's been the ultimate mentor to a student-teacher during this school year and has helped him to grow as an educator. Ms. Seraphin is a Woodland gem, and we could not be more fortunate to have such a wonderful teacher. A truly great, a truly great teacher does more than just impart knowledge. They ignite a spark of curiosity that can last a lifetime. Mrs. Seraphin is that teacher. One of her colleagues adds Tiffany's students have thrived under her instruction, specifically in the areas of reading and writing. The students continue to perform at a very high level on standardized tests under her tutelage. Simply stated, Tiffany is a master teacher. She's highly respected by her colleagues and the entire fifth-grade class, beloved by parents, and has persevered through her own life challenges and has always come out on the other side a winner. Congratulations, Tiffany. This award is so well-deserved.
And now, Mr. Roth from the Middle School.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Van Tyne has been a member of the Warren Middle School community for 23 years. His official title is Band Teacher. Unofficially, he is the Wizard of Warren, who regularly assists with computer, audiovisual, MERC team, crisis team, and logistics issues. He is our tech director for our spring musical and resident wise man for all questions of home and auto repair. Above all else, he is our ambassador and concierge to the world of music. As a member of our music department, Mr. Van Tyne collaborates with his partner, teacher, to co-direct our sixth and seventh and eighth-grade band. In addition, he maintains a student jazz band and participates with neighboring districts to provide honor band. In all things, Mr. Van Tyne strives towards excellence, and is absolutely dedicated to the success of his students in the pursuit of their music education. Among Mr. Van Tyne's gifts is his ability to help students find their path on the music journey. Over the years, there have been many occasions when a student arrives at his classroom door with only the idea of musical interest. Mr. Van Tyne carefully stokes these embers of curiosity through his patience and thoughtful instruction into student musicians who can play with proficiency and pride. Another student community he cultivates is our stage crew. Each spring, he empowers willing students to learn the art of stagecraft, bring musical performance. In addition to his dedication to our students, Mr. Van Tyne is also a tremendous resource for our staff. He's always willing to lend his support and expertise to experiences and events happening within the house if he can provide and help the situation. One of our parents, in reflecting on Mr. Van Tyne, called him a superstar because his eagerness to teach our students the hands-on skills needed to succeed while providing parents with meaningful feedback on their children's progress. We are honored to recognize and celebrate Mr. Joel Van Tyne as our educator.
ALT is now proud to recognize Mrs. Kelly Mayer as this year's recipient of the Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year. Mrs. Mayer has devoted 20 years to supporting students of Warren Township as a compassionate and dedicated school counselor. Beyond her counseling role, she serves as the school's anti-bullying specialist and school testing coordinator, consistently going above and beyond to ensure the well-being and success of every child. Throughout her career, Mrs. Mayer has fostered meaningful relationships with students, earning their trust and becoming a reliable source of guidance. Whether addressing conflicts, navigating challenges with friendships and self-esteem, or supporting students through other personal struggles, she approaches every situation with a calm demeanor that diffuses tension and provides reassurance. Her dedication to mental health advocacy is evident in her efforts to introduce mindfulness practices and breathing strategies, empowering students to manage their emotions and build resilience. In addition to her work with the broader student body, Mrs. Mayer has been instrumental in the success of the district's Social Emotional Education Development, or CEEDE, program, providing essential support to students with emotional regulation impairment. She also serves as a valuable resource for staff and parents, offering guidance to create a nurturing environment for children both at school and home. Mrs. Mayer's unwavering commitment to fostering emotional growth and building a positive school community has left a lasting impact on countless lives. Her dedication, expertise, and genuine care for others make her truly deserving of the recognition as the Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year. Congratulations, Mrs. Mayer. Now again, Ali Tuja from Central School.
It is such a pleasure to be able to recognize someone who leads with grace, embodies bravery, and makes a difference every single day. That someone is Mrs. Mary Beth Henry with a small "b," one word. And I couldn't be more thrilled to celebrate her as this year's Educational Services Professional of the Year. As a paraprofessional, Mary Beth supports students with all kinds of needs, academic, behavioral, emotional, and she does it in the most thoughtful and compassionate way. She takes the time to get to know each child, what motivates them, what makes them tick, and what they need to feel successful. And because of that, she's able to connect with them in ways that truly unlock their potential. Mary Beth is also a certified teacher, and when the need arose, she stepped in to take on a teaching role during a colleague's absence. What started as a temporary assignment turned into a longer-term need, and Mary Beth didn't miss a beat. She put aside her personal interests and put her students first to give them the consistency and care only she could provide. It was one more example of her incredible dedication. Her colleagues will tell you she's the kind of person you want on your team. Teachers often request to work with her, and it's easy to see why. She's collaborative, reliable, and always willing to pitch in and lighten the load. And she does it all with a sense of humor and positivity. Not many people would put up with Route 78 construction in rush hour, both ways, for a paraprofessional salary, but Mary Beth genuinely loves what she does. Mary Beth returned to us from leave less than two weeks ago and is still in treatment, actively conquering breast cancer for the second time in her life. Your return brought back that upbeat buzz and infectious happiness that always surrounds you, and perhaps most importantly, your guidance on what the best lunch order will be every day. While you were out, our Warren Deli orders were haphazard at best, so it's a good thing that we've got you and your wisdom back. Mary Beth, your dedication, your heart, and your positivity are deeply appreciated. You make Central School a better place, not just for the students you support, but for all of us who get to work with, work alongside you. Congratulations.
I'm glad the crew could make it, Nicole. Mount Horb School is very proud to announce that Mrs. Nicole Runfola is this year's Educational Services Provider Award recipient from Mount Horb School. Mrs. Runfola has been a speech and language pathologist for 12 years and has been in Warren since 2016. Prior to Warren, Mrs. Runfola worked in Fair Lawn, New Jersey. While Mrs. Runfola has, has known that she wanted to be in the classroom from a young age, it wasn't until college when she found her passion for communication disorders. Shared between two buildings with a sole focus on preschool, Mrs. Runfola provides her endless well of knowledge, strategies, joy, and patience wherever she goes. She's a member of the preschool child study team, intimately knows each preschool staff member and student, and gets to know her students and their families exceptionally well. Much of the respect and adoration that the team has for Mrs. Runfola comes not only from her warmth and kindness, but also from her ability to inform, to coach, and even teach her colleagues ways to help their children learn to be more successful with communication. When working with children, Mrs. Runfola is only ever seen smiling, pushing her students to new heights, being creative with her approach, and celebrating their many accomplishments. Her joy stems from her students' progress. Since her start in Warren, Mrs. Runfola has developed an expertise in AAC, Augmented and Alternative Communication, and has helped many students find their own voices. Outside of the classroom, Mrs. Runfola founded and co-runs the Special Education Committee, which has very positive impacts on all students and staff at Mount Horb School. The Mount Horb family is extremely proud of Mrs. Runfola.
And now for Ms. Mingle.
It is truly a pleasure, a pleasure to announce Woodland's Education Service Professional winner as Mrs. Allison Rue. Ms. Allison Rue came to us a few years ago from Central, and I can say, Mrs. Tuja, no give-backs. Mrs. Rue is recognized for 27 years of sincere dedication and commitment as a speech and language pathologist in the Warren Township School District. And I can't believe I'm reading this without my old man glasses on. Without question, Mrs. Rue is a model of professionalism, hard work, and passion. Over her years, she's had such an enormous impact on the lives of so many students and their families. Mrs. Rue's ability to connect with her students and her creative lesson planning truly have allowed students to flourish, gain confidence, and grow as human beings. She is a teacher that is almost always last to leave at the end of every day, as she consistently is working to think about best ways to engage her students and how to precisely document their progress. She understands that human connection is critical, and has developed wonderful rapport with all of the students at Woodland. She has the utmost respect from all of her colleagues and is consistently viewed as an ultimate resource. Parents describe Mrs. Rue as a game changer in the life of their child and a treasure that we always need to keep in Warren. Mrs. Rue is a selfish educator, selfish educator who always puts the needs of others before her own. She can be observed working through a prep period or even giving up her lunch just to help a student, a colleague, or a family. She is the epitome of what it means to be an educator, and we're very proud of her for winning this well-deserved award. A great quote reads, "A good teacher isn't someone who gives the answers out to their kids, but is understanding of their needs and challenges and gives them tools to help them succeed." Mrs. Rue represents that quote perfectly. She is consistently giving to others. She arrives every single day with new ideas and new ways to help. She's a gift to children, and we are lucky to have her. Congratulations, Mrs. Rue.
And now, Mr. Valoff from the Middle School.
Mr. Gandhi joined the Warren Middle School staff in September of 2023 as a member of our child study team. In the role of school psychologist, he has immersed himself into the culture of community, availing himself to staff, students, and parents alike. His passion for nurturing young people on their journey through adolescence was immediately clear through his daily practices. Although the culture and expectations of his previous district were notably different from Warren, Mr. Gandhi made the transition seamlessly by engaging all constituents with an eagerness to learn their needs and find ways to support them. He works tirelessly to understand the challenges his students manage and to find tools that will help them to find success. One of our paraprofessionals shared that as she moves through the hallways from class to class, she regularly hears staff saying things like, "I need to ask PJ," or "When I see PJ, I have to remind to speak to him about." And this is a credit to his relationship he has with teachers and the success they have with students based on Mr. Gandhi's insights. He approaches each professional relationship as a critical partnership with a shared goal of guiding students on the educational journey. Upon receiving the Governor's Educator of the Year Award, he told the grade-level school counselor he works with that the award was just as much hers as their partnership has made this happen. One of the key elements of Mr. Gandhi's practice is his accessibility. He regularly meets with students to have chats that allow him to keep up on their progress and their general well-being. His high level of visibility in the hallways, classrooms, and all-purpose room allow him to regularly observe the day-to-day experiences of his students and to help them when they may be struggling. Finally, the families Mr. Gandhi works with value the depth and frequency of the regular communication they have with him. His understanding for their children and feedback, he is able to share from teachers, allow parents to support and encourage their children from their side. he is able to share from teachers, allow parents to support and encourage their children from their side of the relationship. We are very proud that Mr. Gandhi is our Educational Services Professional of the Year for Warren Middle School. Unfortunately, Mr. Gandhi could not be with us tonight due to a prior obligation, but he did want me to extend his sincere gratitude for the award.
Each year, the state recognizes a select group of outstanding educators with the title of Exemplary Educator of the Year. It is with great pride and honor that ALT recognizes Mrs. Tara Lento as one of this year's distinguished recipients. Since joining our district in 2006, Mrs. Lento has demonstrated unwavering dedication to meeting the diverse needs of students in special education. She has served as a resource room teacher across fourth and fifth grades, both individually and in combination, and has also co-taught in an in-class resource classroom for third grade. In every role, she has remained flexible, responsive, and committed to doing what's best for her students. Mrs. Lento is known for her exceptional ability to differentiate instruction. Her students benefit from thoughtfully tailored lessons that support their academic and social emotional growth. Her colleagues frequently turn to her for support, recognizing her as a trusted resource and admiring her systematic binders filled with leveled materials across all the grade levels. Her high expectations for student success are matched by her deep compassion. Year after year, she takes the time to understand each learner's mind, developing individualized approaches that connect, support, and celebrate every student. Whether working with children who have Down syndrome or those navigating behavioral challenges in our emotional regulation impairment program, she inspires confidence and a love of learning. Mrs. Lento truly embodies the qualities of an exemplary educator. She leads with kindness, teaches with intention, and inspires with heart. Her respect for children, passion for learning, and dedication to excellence make her more than deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Mrs. Lento, on being named Exemplary Educator.
Mount Horb staff are very proud to celebrate Mrs. Deborah Yankowitz as the recipient of the NJ DOE Exemplary Educator Award. Deb, yeah, let's clap. Deb is a dual-certified teacher in the preschool disabled classroom in Mount Horb School. The criteria to receive this award, as stated by the DOE, is that the candidate exhibits strong knowledge and skills, an inspiring presence, and a positive impact on students, colleagues, and the school community. No problem. Since Deb's interview in 2017, it has been clear to everyone that she works with, to everyone that works with her, that she is, in all categories, a superstar. To support strong knowledge and skills, Mrs. Yankowitz helped to shape our ability to work with preschool students with a wider array of abilities. Her understanding of child development, knowledge of how to address the needs of all types of learners, and, on top of it all, how to connect with children in a way that serves to motivate and inspire is simply tremendous. Since 2017, Mrs. Yankowitz has very genuinely celebrated each and every one of the accomplishments made by each and every one of her students. With her inspiring presence, she serves to motivate, encourage, and truly inspire her students to try and achieve beyond what others may believe they can. She never stops, doesn't let roadblocks slow her down, and has an impressively vast tool belt that allows her to work with all children with all forms of need. It's incredible to watch. As for the positive impact on students, which we've just covered, colleagues, and the school community, Mrs. Yankowitz has helped to shape preschool programs and programmatic philosophies. She's co-founded and co-leads the Special Education Committee for Mount Horb School, regularly supports the hiring process, and spends much time communicating and consulting with parents about the needs of their children. Wherever she is and with whomever she is working, she always adds value, insight, and a guaranteed laugh in all that she does. Please put your hands together for Mrs. Deborah Yankowitz. Mr. Heaney.
It's an honor to announce Mr. John Chickless, known as Mr. T. to our students as Woodlands Exemplary Educator Award winner. Let's hear it. Without question, Mr. T. is a master teacher. Throughout his planning, he works to create lessons that encourage students to work hard, exercise, collaborate, and communicate. Mr. T. consistently scores very high on the areas of student engagement and overall classroom environment under the Danielson Evaluation System that our school utilizes. Mr. T. has students set fitness goals in the classroom and at home to promote a healthy lifestyle. Students consistently want to be in his class due to his creativity, enthusiasm, and energy. Mr. T. leads by example and brings out the best in his colleagues. He's always the first person to help a new teacher feel welcome to Woodland School, and he offers great advice and sincere help. When a teacher is struggling with classroom management or needs engaging strategies, I'll often send them to Mr. T.'s room or his gym. He does not settle for average, and each year enhances his teaching. When he came to Woodland School, he quickly turned field day into one of, if not the most, engaging events of the school year where students make everlasting memories. His lessons are incredibly creative. He turns a simple bowling lesson into a cosmic bowling experience. Scooter play into a Mario Kart course, and even jump roping into really creative challenges. It's amazing to see how kids are so involved. They don't even realize they're exercising. Mr. T. teaches more than just sports skills. He cultivates teamwork, models resiliency, encourages and promotes sportsmanship, and creates an inclusive environment where every student feels valued and empowered to challenge themselves. Mr. T. is a gifted educator, and the students, staff, and families of Woodland are extremely lucky to have him. Congratulations, Mr. T.
Each year, the New Jersey Studies Academic Alliance Teaching identifies teachers of social studies and history in the state of New Jersey who create innovative and dynamic experiences for students to understand the role of New Jersey in our nation. The purpose of this award is more than just a recognition. As the mission of the NJSAA is to provide educators of the state with meaningful lessons and insights into our history, the recipient of the award is called upon to teach other teachers and further their knowledge. This year, the alliance has chosen a teacher in the state of New Jersey, and that is Ms. Lindy. There's more, wait, wait. Mrs. Deegan is in her 21st year as a social studies teacher here at Warren Middle School, where she creates classrooms that promote meaningful learning experiences in history, civics, politics, geography, and current events. She tasks her students with real-world problems through inquiry-based learning. Her passion is to develop responsible citizens who think critically about issues that range from local to global. In addition to her notable lessons on the Constitution, New Jersey elections, current events, and the US and New Jersey legislatures, Ms. Deegan designed and established the Warren History Day Field Trip, which creates opportunities for our students to learn about this community. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Deegan as the recipient of the 2025 New Jersey Studies Academic Alliance Teaching Award.
Before we conclude tonight's celebration of excellence in education, we have one more very special recognition to share. Throughout this evening, we've honored outstanding educators who make a daily difference in the lives of their students. And it's only fitting that we now recognize a leader whose vision, integrity, and commitment have elevated the work of every educator and through those educators, every student in this district. It's with great pride that I announce that Mr. Bill Kimmick, our Assistant Superintendent, has been selected as the recipient of the 2025 New Jersey Association of School Administrators Central Office Administrator of the Year Award. This statewide honor is awarded to one leader in New Jersey who inspires change, models collaborative leadership, and builds systems that empower both staff and students to thrive. Mr. Kimmick's impact has been felt deeply here in Warren, from the award-winning Capstone Challenge to his work mentoring administrators to the ways he fosters teamwork and innovation throughout our schools. His leadership reflects not just the priorities of the district, but its heart. Mr. Kimmick, on behalf of the board and the entire school community, congratulations and thank you for your leadership each and every day.
Congratulations to all of the recipients for their well-deserved awards and honors this evening. We couldn't be more proud of each and every one of you. The board is going to take a break at this point so that everyone can see the art and go to the back where there is a display that you can take photographs in front of. About five or 10 minutes, we won't officially recess, but take this time. Following that, you're free to stay, of course, but if you don't wish to, then that's fine as well. So about five or 10 minutes, everyone. Enjoy your pictures. Okay, we're going to proceed. There is no discussion item on tonight's agenda, and we do not have any reports from appointed members to external assignments. Pardon me, so we're moving on to committee reports, starting with Curriculum and Technology. Mr. Thor.
Thank you. I also have old man glasses as well. So I am reporting a bit late. Apologies for a March meeting that the curriculum committee had, and there's really two things of note from that committee meeting. So one was a presentation by Principal Villar and Ms. Messinger around culture and climate at Warren Middle School. The results were firstly, I'll speak about the NJ SCI survey. So the results were actually positive, indicated positive on all parameters. The three main ones being supportive staff and student relationships, sense of physical safety, and sense of student belonging. The second survey was actually set for April, and I got to speak to Principal Villar today, and the basically the results backed up the first survey. So that's nice to see that there's consistency and that they're able to build on that and maintain the momentum. The only other thing of note there is that SCL has transitioned from being originally mainly for special events and assemblies to just being embedded in the everyday classroom culture. So that's ongoing work, obviously. And Ms. Messinger and Principal Villar proposed actually keeping the consultant they'd been working with in the district, sorry, in the school, who's been really helping the staff to embed all of this and make it successful. And the curriculum committee obviously agreed that that was a good idea. And so that, I would imagine, is going ahead. So that was that on that one. So congratulations again on the second set of survey results. The second topic was math placement, and we had a presentation from Bill on basically on students who are waving in while not necessarily often against the district's recommendation or the district's advice. So we agreed as a curriculum committee to support the administration in setting minimum standards moving forward, I believe, for the 26-27 academic year, and also enforcing those standards so that if the district, if the student doesn't meet the minimum levels, the student cannot just wave into a more advanced math class against the district's advice. And again, we supported that and agreed with that and are aligned as a curriculum committee. And that's the two main areas.
Thank you, Mr. Thor. Finance Operations and Security Committee met on May 5th, 2025. The first item we covered was the RFP timeline for a commercial vendor for the food service program in the district. Two of our schools, Central and Woodland, now have a percentage of student body requiring the provision not only of free and reduced lunch options through the National School Lunch Program, but also breakfast. And accordingly, a new RFP was put out. That process is underway, and it's expected that we will see a recommendation for a vendor at the June meeting. Appearing tonight as item B9 on the agenda is a recommendation for a proposal addressing the capital plan projects for parking lots and sidewalks at Woodland. This does not include the crosswalk sidewalk discussion, which has been ongoing for quite some time, and which I will get to in a minute. Again, that appears tonight with the recommendation of the committee as item B9. And finally, we had an update on the Planning for Growth Working Group, which is being established as part of tonight's passing of the five-year strategic plan. Invitations have gone out and been accepted by all members of the working group, and a first meeting of that group is scheduled for the 2nd of June. Regarding the crosswalk and sidewalk, Mr. Otto and myself had a meeting on the 6th of May onsite on Sterling Road across from the Lindbergh Development, Woodland School, and the high school. Present were myself, Mr. Otto, Mr. Hegel, our Director of Operations, Mr. Pate, Mr. Heaney, Principal of Woodland School. The township engineer joined us, as well as representatives of the Warren Police Department. From the high school was the Business Administrator, Director of Operations, President of the Board of Education of the High School, Mr. Bernburg, and Chair of their Operations Committee, Ms. Trumpore. This visit was to have onsite opportunity to see the dangers that exist in crossing that road at that location as the parties continue to move forward towards drafting a solution, a crosswalk, sidewalk solution, hopefully to enhance and ensure the safety of all pedestrians, but most particularly students of all ages, both in the K8 district as well as high school students. That is all personnel negotiations, Ms. Keller.
The Personnel Negotiations and Communications Committee met on Monday, April 28. We had three topics that are on the agenda for approval tonight. One is the job description for the Confidential Executive Assistant to the Superintendent. One is the non-certificated staff org chart and updates that were made to that. And the other is the non-aligned salary recommendations. And the last item we talked about is the process for the superintendent evaluation, which will be kicking off in a couple of weeks. You all received an email about it. I try to be friendly.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Keller. At this time, we will be opening the public hearing on the superintendent's contract portion of the agenda. Chapter 53 requires boards of education to permit the public to comment on any changes or amendments to certain administrative contracts as they are renewed. Today, we are permitting public comment on the proposed contract of our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mingle. The board will be voting to approve a new contract for 2025 through 2030. The board pursuant to NJ SA 10:4-12B shall not publicly discuss personnel matters and shall not respond to comments made by members of the public. The board will give all comments appropriate consideration. And with that note, once again, with regard to all public comment, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Please start by giving us your name and address. And again, this is specifically with regard to the superintendent's contract. I am now opening it for public comment to the room.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nancy Andrews, and I am the proud president of the Warren Township Education Association. I wanted to take a moment to express our support for Dr. Mingle. Over the past several years, we've witnessed a leader who listens, collaborates, and consistently puts students and educators first. Dr. Mingle has shown a true commitment to strengthening our schools, whether by advocating for fair funding, supporting professional development, or ensuring our voices are heard at the decision-making table. We may not always agree on every detail, but we know when we're working with someone who respects educators and who values our partnership. We look forward to continuing this strong relationship and building a school system where every student and every educator has what they need to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Good evening, members of the Warren Board of Education. My name is Jeff Heaney, the Principal of Woodland School. I also serve as the President of the Warren Township Administration Association. On behalf of the principals and the supervisors who sit here before me of the Warren Township Administrative Association, I would like to share our sincere support for Dr. Mingle and his new contract. Dr. Mingle's intelligence is evident in his insightful approach to the complex issues facing education today. He possesses a clear vision for the future of our schools, and he is a careful and collaborative strategic planner and continues to lay the groundwork for continued success of the Warren School District. Beyond these qualities, his dedication and commitment to the students, staff, and community are always evident. There's no doubt that the Warren School District and the community are extremely lucky to have Dr. Mingle lead our district. It is with unified and full confidence that the Warren Township Administratives Association stand firmly behind Dr. Mingle and his outstanding leadership. Extending his contract will allow us to continue to benefit from his clear and innovative direction and ensure a bright future for our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heaney. Is there anyone else in our live audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move to the Zoom audience, Ms. Singleton.
Good evening. I can't disagree with what the educators have said because I don't know what it's like to work with Dr. Mingle, but I can only take what they say as on face value. However, I'm going to take my minutes to go on record again, just like I did in October '22, the last time we were negotiating Dr. Mingle's five-year contract. And I want to be clear again, I am not saying the superintendent is doing a bad job, not at all, but the pattern of behavior is undeniably cynical and manipulative. Every few years, a new pressure point is used to secure another favorable increase in pay and benefits five-year contract. 2018 was the first time, two years after joining the district. COVID in the spring of 2020, the implied threat of leaving for another district in the fall of 2022, and rezoning the schools. And here we are again, spring of 2025, and the pressure point is growth projections and stability, and another five-year contract. These tactics may be strategic, but they also reflect a tasteless disregard for the authority of the Board of Education, the taxpayer of Warren, and a troubling lack of professional integrity. This isn't leadership, it's opportunism. Despite repeatedly demanding long-term contracts of five years, the five-year terms are never fully honored. That's not leadership, that's leverage, and it puts the board in a constant position of reacting out of fear instead of leading as they should with strength. It's time to change that dynamic. Contracts are legal commitments. If they are not going to be respected, they should not be offered. The board must hold its highest-paid employee accountable and reassert its role as the governing authority in this district. Stop reacting out of fear and start leading with principle. Show backbone, say no. Make him honor the term for once. It goes to 2027 anyway. Our taxpayers deserve nothing less than him honoring his contractual obligation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Is there anyone else in the Zoom audience that would like to speak? Last chance. Do we have a motion to close public commentary on the superintendent's contract?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The opportunity for public comment on the superintendent's contract has closed. I'm just going to briefly give the financial terms of the new contract so that they are on the record. The new contract extends the term of Dr. Mingle's contract from June 30th, 2027 to June 30th, 2030, which aligns with the five-year strategic plan being adopted tonight by the Board of Education. It includes an increase not to exceed $1,000 in reimbursement for actual professional development expenses. It includes a 2% increase on base salary for '25-'26 to a new base of $232,000. Thereafter, a 3% annual increase will apply, which is in line with the WTAA contract. A one-time personal leave of absence not to exceed 10 days, which may only be used in July of 2025, is provided for, and the final financial term is an increase not to exceed $1,000 in reimbursement of actual membership fees for professional organizations. Moving on, we're going to move directly to the first opportunity for public commentary, which applies to items for board consideration. This is the second of three opportunities. The final public commentary opportunity will appear at the end of the agenda, and that will be for any topic that anyone wishes to raise. If you wish to address the board on agenda items, please use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, or raise your hand here in the audience. Please state your name and address and direct your comments to me, a providing officer, and please limit your comments to three minutes. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on agenda topics?
Hi again, still Nancy Andrews and still the president of the Warren Township Education Association. I wanted to say with great pride and admiration that I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to all of the teachers and the support staff members of this year's recipients. This recognition is a reflection of their unwavering commitment, compassion, and excellence in serving our students, schools, and communities here in Warren. Their dedication inspires not only those around us, but also uplifts the entire profession. They represent the very best of what we do, and we are honored to stand with you as fellow educators and union members. Congratulations on this well-earned honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Is there anyone else in the live audience that would like to address the board on agenda topics? Seeing none, is there anyone in the Zoom audience that would like to address the Board of Education on agenda topics? Last chance. Do I have one?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Ms. Singleton, I did not see you. Please.
Thank you. I did, I put my hand down and raised it again. So I would just like to say that my son was listening in earlier and heard the award again being given to Mr. Van Tyne, and he said that his experiences with Mr. Van Tyne are fantastic and that he more than deserved the recognition that he received this evening from the governor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Do we have any other remarks from the Zoom audience? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close this opportunity for public commentary?
Motion closed.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? This opportunity for public commentary is now closed. We are making an adjustment in the agenda, so the next item will be an executive session. Ms. Keller.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10-4-11 permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss a matter involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property with public funds and pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation and/or matters of attorney-client privilege. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately 45 minutes. Be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? The board is now in executive session.
We have the good ones.
I can stroke them all.
Oh, man.
It was actually taking the fourth.
Yeah, I can start.
This is what.
It is.
You haven't found the good ones. The body is good. It's just your.
Do I have a motion to return to open session?
Most of our time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. The board is now in open session. Items for board consideration and action. Dr. Mingle, do you have any comments?
Just want to say item A three is the approval of the strategic plan as presented last meeting. Thank you again to everybody who helped make that possible. And in the personnel section of the agenda, this is the hardest meeting agenda of the year for the business office and our human resources staff because it requires making sure that every single employee, there are almost 400, have the accurate information. So thank you to Chris and your and your team, also Miss Gorski, who is here. It's a lot of work as well as Sandy Dodd, who's my assistant, to get all those things in order. That's it.
Okay, we will be pulling C four for a separate vote. Does any member of the Board of Education have any other item on items for board consideration they wish to pull for a separate conversation or vote? Seen none. Ms. Keller.
Motion to approve items A one through A three, B one through B nine, C one through C three, and C five through C twenty six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hagel.
Right. Consent agenda. Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Granholm?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulfeta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
The motion's passed nine zero.
Thank you. Ms. Keller. We move it, second it, and then open for discussion.
Motion to. Item C four?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any conversation or discussion with regard to item C four? Seen none. Mr. Hagel, vote please.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Granholm?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulfeta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
I want to preface my vote. This vote is not in connection to my views on Dr. Mingle and the job he has done and continues to do for our district. He has my unwavering support as the superintendent of our K through eight district. He does a fantastic job. Thank you. I do not agree with the terms of the contract, so I am voting no.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. On?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one.
Thank you. We do not have any unfinished business or new business on the agenda this evening, so we are moving to the last opportunity for public commentary. This is the third opportunity this evening for public commentary, and it is open to any topic you wish to raise to the board's attention. Again, I ask that you use the raise your hand feature on Zoom or raise your hand if you happen to be in the audience. Remember, the comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address before beginning, looking first to the room, the now empty room, seen none, moving to our Zoom audience. Last chance. Seen none. Do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. The second, last, third opportunity for public commentary is now closed. Ms. Keller?
Motion to adjourn?
We have second. All in favor? Opposed, abstain. This meeting has ended. Thank you.